Share this one up here, this is the right one. Five ninety-four, three.
I don't know if you've got the other updated though.
No.
Because I made a bunch of changes.
Okay.
All around, so. Couple of things before we get started, I just want to remind you that this is a budget. So you need to remember this is a constraint of what we're going to spend. We're not going to go over this, but we can always go under it. So I know there's a lot of uptight at how much budget we have versus income. But I will remind you all that I estimate low on income. And rather budget high on, you know, make sure that we can get what we need without having to go for additional appropriations all the time. So. So there's a little bit of wiggle room and hopefully, you know, we budget high, our department heads don't spend all of it. We estimate income low, but we end up getting more and we kind of meet somewhere in the middle. So I just want to get that out there right now. Number two. On the income, I did make some changes. Marlene gave me her estimate of what the township contribution would be. And I plugged that in and usually that's considerably lower. So the income's actually risen up about eighty thousand dollars. And then, just so that you know, for the EMS income, I put it at eighty-five hundred dollars estimated billing. And six thousand dollars for the Plaschke County contract, eighty-five hundred dollars. For Culver academies and then. Let's see, I put in, I think about three hundred thousand for the township, leaving some legal room because there may be some adjustments and I didn't want to over commit, I'd rather under commit. So just so you know where the income is coming from for the EMS. I got an update from the health insurance. And they had originally given us a number of budget ten percent increase for health insurance. They came back and they're estimating a five point eight percent increase, so that's half. I still don't have our specific amount. So I went back into the budgets and estimated an eight percent increase. Because again, I don't want to end up estimating too low and then us getting stuck. But that did take, you know, shave a couple of thousand dollars off of everybody's budget and so that's what's in here now. The third thing is Tuesday night Jeff came and he presented his budget. But you guys didn't have the opportunity to hear everything that Jonathan and Marlene and I heard as far as his plans for generating income and the changes that he wants to make. And so before, I mean, we've shaved down his budget as well. But you need to hear that there are opportunities on the flip side as far as income to make up some of the increases that we're looking at. So I just wanted to get that out there because I don't think you all got to hear the full story before we kind of started making all these judgments yesterday and racing around and getting all upset about how much, what the difference is. So, that being said. I don't know where you want to start.
Well, don't you want to start with Jeff and let him go forward with what?
That's fine, yep.
I mean, does everybody else agree with that?
Before we do that, can you walk us through the income statement for EMS? This is a healthy income and just to make sure everyone understands where it comes from.
I don't know that it's necessarily healthy, but it's an emergency medical service. So they only generate income when they respond to a call. So we're waiting on somebody to get sick and need a ride to the hospital or something like that. But my, you know. My estimate is they'll generate about eighty-five thousand dollars in billing. Now, once you hear Jeff talk and there are some changes that can be made, that number may go up. So, but again, it's waiting on people to get sick. So there's six thousand dollars that comes from Plaschke County. And that's a contract that we have for covering the Monterey area. And that's something that he wants to revisit and I'm taking all the disunders, so I apologize. Eighty-five hundred dollars comes from the academies. And that's what we're budgeting now. I realize that there's conversations to be had. And I think we don't need to address those conversations tonight, I think that could be done another time. Because I think anytime that comes up, we end up getting stuck and mired in that mud and we don't get onto other issues. And then about three hundred thousand dollars from the union township and Marlene will probably tell you that it's different at this point, but that's just kind of the number that I plugged in as a placeholder.
Karen?
Yes.
I have a question. In the nineteen, or two thousand nineteen annual report. And there's a bar graph in there.
Okay.
About EMS income. Why has that declined as much through the years?
Well, there's a couple of different issues. It may be not as many runs. One of the things is we used to do a lot of runs for, we used to transport for Millers as I understand. And that's no longer. And then I think there have been some issues just getting billing out. Like getting the information to AccuMed so that they can do the proper billing. So, and it may also be, you know, people aren't paying. And so those go to deflections, so there's a delay. And so there's a whole bunch of factors that go into that.
Thank you.
Alright, let's have jump walk this through it.
Alright. Proposed budget for twenty twenty-one.
Is that the EMS budget that she just handed us?
Yes. Yes.
So these numbers were updated?
Those numbers, I, that's why I was running late.
Okay.
So.
Alright. Salaries. Three hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty. How did I come to that number? Coming to that number through a variety of different factors. I have to take into consideration the hours worked by the three full-time people along with overtime hours. And then I have to fill in the amount of other times needed by the rest of the department to fill in. There are roughly almost eighteen thousand hours for the entire year that has to be covered. With that, I have to figure in paid time off, sick time, holiday pay and whatnot. And then I do a calculation based upon average salaries to come up with a, basically a raw visible number to come up to the three hundred and thirty-four thousand. The goal is to be a little bit high, come a little bit low, but not go over. And I feel, I feel very comfortable with this number based upon some trending factors throughout the last five years. Longevity was only just a moderate, you know, minor increase of a thousand, actually down, or actually proposed was fifteen hundred, but we brought it down to a thousand. Benefits. Karen was able to do some things and actually reduce it a little bit more, it's down ninety-seven, seven fifty. Office supplies, up seven fifty. They're all minor and slightly increases, but they have a value that go along with it. There are things that need to be done, things that are needed to be had in the office. And so just a minor increase in that. Gasoline, three thousand, keeping well within that. Is it close from last year? Yes. Are we going to be close this year? Hopefully so. Medical supplies, this was an area that was drastically increased, it was doubled. Over the years, sorry, actually it wasn't, yes, it was doubled. Over the year, over the months here, COVID came. As you all know, COVID increased a lot of different funding. Whether it's reducing or increasing the cost of the supplies or increasing the need for PPE. All the way around, everything from as little as Band-Aid to as big as a innovation tube. An innovation tube went up in price significantly. Some items become extraordinary increase because of the demand of it. That debt increase will continue on into twenty twenty-one. So the need to increase that as much was to fulfill those needs. Because as this goes on, so will probably relief funding from the federal government or the state government because you're giving time to adjust. So some of those things that we may have, may not have, so we need to be prepared for it to have it for the workforce that we have. This kind of goes along with COVID. When I took over the director, I took a task of the COVID. A, the clothing that clothes me today didn't even have the right sizes for me. We had closet full of variety of different sizes, but none that fit my size. What I plan on doing with the clothing is to streamline, to reduce the amount of oddball sizes. So we have more of a clothing that streamlines the workforce that we currently have and the current needs as it goes along. Also, I was informed by some of the staff that they share coats. Some of these coats are worn on calls. And due to COVID, due to contaminants, we don't need to be sharing clothes. Let alone be using someone else's t-shirt question, so on and so forth. So we need to make sure that we adequately clothe and provide for our employees. Thus, also with COVID, increased washing, we increased laundry of the clothes. After some of the calls, after they come back from a possible COVID patient or a potential COVID patient. A lot of the crews are washing their clothes, taking a shower out of the abundance of caution because they don't want to be sitting in there being around the station wearing the same clothes that someone just coughed on, someone spilled on and whatnot. So all of that takes a toll when you start to launder clothes when you're new on.
Do they have a washer dryer?
Yes, we do. So they've been utilizing that and taking care of them, so we do, we meet those needs.
Okay, Jeff, before you keep going, the medical supply one, so do we count when we get like PPP funding or what is it, the CARES funding, is that considered revenue or to offset some of this?
Yeah, so what we're going to do this year is just, we've been kind of tracking, or we have been tracking expenses, but some of the stuff that has been ordered, like Scott ordered some medical supplies that I don't, I don't have the expertise to say, yeah, this is PPE or it was needed for the CARES Act. So just going to get me a list of that and we're going to go ahead and apply for refunds. So there are a couple of line items for this year that are going to, the spending will be, which will be credited. So we'll receive it, it's income, but I'm going to credit their, credit the line item in the budget so that at the end of the day, his budget won't be as over as.
Okay. Is that, and does it become part of rolling, become part of the EMS fees?
You know, I will get you a list of what we get reimbursement for so that you know. My plan is, his budget's, we know it's going to be over probably by about twenty thousand dollars. So I'm going to end up making a journal entry so that when the, so if he spent ten thousand dollars and he was only allowed to spend five thousand dollars and we get, you know, three thousand dollars back from the CARES Act, I'm going to reimburse his budget so it only shows that he's only by two thousand. Does that make sense?
Okay, but you're going to show that as a separate line item then or?
I can get, I'll. I'm going to have to, can I get with you on that?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering how that works.
Yeah.
I'm sure your higher expenses there.
Other supplies and training materials both staying at the, not listed. So, getting into the other services and charges, legal fees, same rate at five hundred. Postage, we're eliminating postage. We can absorb that into some other related expenses above and office supplies. Telephone, just a small increase and that's mainly because of my telephone. Travel expenses, eliminated that completely. Advertising, eliminated that. Insurance and bonds, keeping that at the same financial, reducing that from the proposed budget twenty twenty from nineteen to seventeen. Electric and gas, same rate at five thousand. Water and soup, eight hundred. Repairs and maintenance, four thousand. Now repairs and maintenance is an area that has increased, buys increased because of repairs and changes of the items. Right now, I currently have a truck that needs to, it's going to be going Monday to get evaluation on the air condition. The air condition is out in the front part of there. So on a hot day like this, that's it. So those are the ongoing things and trending in here as the fleet is aging and as the equipment is aging, we need to be able to have the money set aside for those unexpected busts to further reduce having to come back for appropriation after appropriation. So my goal is trying to stay within a budget for you so we don't have the expenditures throughout the year. So the only time I'm coming to you is out of an emergency and above and out of my control. So that was the increase of that. Rentals, we don't print anything out, so that is it, saltwater, four hundred and fifty. Lease and purchase, we increased that from twenty to sixty-two-five. Now, as some of you all know, we plan on trying to purchase an ambulance. In doing it, we have the ability to buy, use this year and use next year to not make it be a one month sum payment. So spreading it out over two budgets, still betting it this year on these prices.
Twenty twenty-one.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one, excuse me. Twenty twenty-one and then purchasing it in twenty twenty-two is a twenty twenty-one pricing that we get in twenty twenty-two. So we can actually spread out the time a little bit more. So it gives us a little bit more of a recoup time and it gives us more time to, and actually back up some miles on some of our other deals. But be cautious because we are entering a phase, even though the vehicle mileage is low, which I'll share with you in a little bit when we talk about hours versus miles. Next item is instruction, keeping that right at the same per, increasing that at twenty-five hundred. And then contractual services, keeping that at thirty thousand. Now the capital outlay, and I talked to you a great deal about that. And there are several things that I want to do. What I've come up with is a basically three-year, four-month plan to address those needs over this course of three, in three years and four months. And so as long as we can stay within these realms of these numbers that are listed, this will allow me to do the capital improvements, the capital things that are needed over the course of three years. So then we no longer have to have a large amount of capital outlay. We can then go to more of a maintenance versus a larger amount every so many years. Which some of you, if you love to come by, you could see some of the reasons why some of the things are the way they are. It's not that the previous administrators didn't do enough or didn't do this, but there are needs and listening to the employees and looking at the things, there are things that we need to do. There are safety concerns, there are support services that are needed within the department for going to calls, responding to calls, working in the calls, that all need to be addressed and are being addressed to maximize their efficiency, to maximize their safety and or to limit their safety, or to maximize their safety, but to also provide the best possible service that we can. One thing is different between Culver and larger departments. We can't, we can't beat them on the wage. It's easy to sit here and go, well, we can't beat a big city and get a top salary. What we can do, what's different between us and the big city is that we can provide good quality equipment. That equipment, when managed and managed properly, can give us the equipment that we need, maintain that equipment in the time. Recruiting people, getting people to stay, they see that value. It's not necessarily about the battle, they look at the quality, they look at the equipment, they look at their living conditions. And when they look at that, they're able to sit there and say, hey, I don't mind taking the pay cut because of what you have. You can have a private service and all you'll do is find Band-Aid after Band-Aid of the equipment that you have in the back of it. My history with finding people and hiring people from private services and from other services that will be more a little bit higher on the wage is they have to give up somewhere else. And so the employee has more long-term fixed costs. The equipment really doesn't. Yes, it's a maintain of those lifespans of this equipment when you buy the equipment right. When you invest in the right equipment, it will last you and it will last the test of time. But when you buy cheap, that's what you get. It's not that we have to buy the most expensive, but we have to buy the most reliable and the most effective. And that's what we want to have, the recent residents of township and the town. We want to have the very best that we can, not only with equipment, but with the employees. And so it's a two-part plan. We want to have the best dollar we can, but we know there is a limit, there's a seam and we have to stay within it. But we can be flexible a little bit with capital outlay. And then if we do it right and plan it, which I'm all about planning. I'm not about just taking your money and spending it on purpose things throughout the year or years. It's methodically taking things that we truly need and making sure it works first, not all the day, but in that lifespan, in that lifespan. You know, I've talked about, you guys here lately, I've talked about lifespans. Ambulances, ten years, cots, seven years, monitors, seven years. They have lifespans for certain reasons. There's other products that have lifespans as well, just like a battery does in your car or in your flashlight. There's reasons why you change it and the same thing goes with the equipment that we have. Technology change, equipment starts to wear, wears faster. And the equipment that we have today is not the equipment that we had yesterday. It's more advanced, it's more costly, it's more effective, it's more diagnostic. So not only are you getting the very best, they're getting the best results and so they're able to treat you the best possible. We could go back and have an ELS service or an advanced service or volunteer service. And things will diminish. It's not scare tactic, it's not anything like that, it's about service. The periodic level is your premium level. You are getting the very best in prehospital care. You can go around the surrounding communities, you can go over to Stark County. Stark County has the highest infant mortality rate. Now, prehospital care, we won't do that, but there's things that we can do in the prehospital field that will improve that. It's education that we can do within our own members that we see in our own community. Marshall County doesn't have that, but we do have that when we go to Monterey. There are things that we can do that I want to implement and I will implement to get this more professional and more things addressed. So. That, helping them, I'll go to Brady's, fifty-five hundred. We came down that because we found a way that we can make it work within the three-year plan and with some creative thinking we talked about over the last couple of days here. Same with building repairs, it's just there's ways that we can get around this and we can do this effectively. Which totals out our total budget of five ninety-four, three eighty.
So the other night we landed at six fifteen something, right? Okay.
Paint. Art. Ben. Title. Variety of things. Just getting the place, there's, there's switches that are missing things. There are openings in the wall, there are smoke detectors that are missing. If you come by, I can show you each and every one of those things.
Nice, curious. Wouldn't you say, Jeff, wouldn't you say five ninety-four, what?
Five ninety-four, three eighty.
Pardon?
Five ninety-four, three eighty.
Three eighty, thank you.
And when it comes to revenue, fact that I gave you last week, briefly talking about revenue. When you're in the medical field and you look at certain things, they always talk about demographics. They always talk about what's your, what's your pay ratio, okay? For the area that we serve and for the area that we're dealing with right now. Basically sixty, sixty-three percent is Medicaid Medicare. Of that, of our charges, half of that is only returned to us. There is no recoup, we, we probably pay. We cannot bill, we can bill the patients, we cannot charge them the user fee, we cannot do anything else but encumber those, or basically write off those costs. Commercial, twenty-seven percent. It's great, but it could be higher. If we were at sixty percent on commercial, our revenue would be great, we'd have a higher number.
When you say commercial, I don't understand.
When you talk commercial, we're talking Blue Cross, Blue Shield, UMR, UnitedHealthcare, for the insurance that we currently have right now. That is your commercial.
That's, yeah, so right now we collect twenty-seven percent of what's billed under those?
Twenty percent of our call volume is commercial pay and they pay one hundred percent. Now, to keep in mind, when they pay, let's say they have Blue Cross. Blue Cross is only going to pay so much for the ambulance. I can bill them for eight hundred and fifty dollars, but at the end of the day, if Blue Cross says they're only going to pay three hundred and fifty, because they kind of go in line with Medicaid and Medicare. Medicaid and Medicare set the standard of how much we pay for healthcare. And so the commercial insurances generally follow suit with that. They do raise things up a little bit, but then the other portion comes back to you. And so then we have to go after you as the end user for that recouping that other, whether it's a quarter percent, whether it's a third of that percent.
What's our success rate on that?
Well, this year, we're carrying a bad debt of eighty-nine hundred dollars. So roughly, we're going to be, we're carrying about ten percent of bad debt. It's not bad, you know, but it could be better. But it's things that we can work out. Because when I laid out in the other, in the other pages there, is that there are things that we need to do within the building we are doing. Now, since I took over, I have gotten myself to know AccuMed. I've gotten to know the understandings, the inner workings of AccuMed. Now, loved, hated, what matters, they're our willing provider. But remember this, they take eight point seven-five percent off the top. They don't take it off the bottom, they don't take it off the four fifty that we collect for Medicaid, they take it off the top. Now, it is a minor amount of money. Then we pay another probably about four thousand dollars a year, just an annual servicing fee. So we don't have the volume to maybe even get some other discounts. And I'd be happy to look anywhere else to make it to see what the difference would be. But keep in mind, of that eighty-nine hundred dollars in bad debt, we're carrying, we already paid seven hundred and seventy-two of that dollars to AccuMed. So we can raise the rates all we want, but we have to be delicate with what we raise because it's a balancing act. Because we could go up in our base rate, but that just means AccuMed's going to take a higher cut. And we're still only going to get four hundred and fifty for Medicaid. Now, there are different levels of payment. There's ALS, there's ALS two. Now, ALS one is just a basic call. I come to your house, I put you on the monitor, I start an ID and I take you to the hospital. ALS two is if I come to your house and I give you like two medications or you're in cardiac arrest or you're having major complications. Then it gets billed to an ALS two charge. And when we do that, I'm sorry, the four twenty-five that Medicaid, Medicare pays for the ALS one, they only go up to six hundred and fifteen now for an ALS two. So you have to, you have to, it's a balancing act. I can't get any more, we build twelve hundred for an ALS two. So, you know, we are trying to stay where we're at, like that fifty percent, but it's all controlled for by the centers of Medicare services. And so they, every year, they set that. Next year, there's an increase. Next year, there's a, a, a increase of point nine percent. So it's a very small increase, where they've been trending like about one point two, one point three percent over the last five, six years. And then on top of all of this, they, they add on, on mileage. So, mileage, we charge twelve dollars and fifty cents a mile. Now, we are rural, we're not urban, they are two different things. The entire state of Indiana pays, it gets paid the same thing. I could go one county over, or I could go to Indianapolis, and they're getting the same amount of money from Medicare, Medicaid, and they're getting the same amount of mileage. The only difference between Indianapolis and Coper is that we get to charge per rural miles. They, they have an urban, it's a very small, minute amount, and so that adjusts accordingly. The only other thing that we have to understand also is how the billing works. I can go to the factory here and take somebody to Rochester, but in all actuality, it's closer to go to Plymouth. Medicaid and Medicare won't pay the mileage to go to Rochester, they will only pay the mileage to go to Plymouth. They dictate some of this thing. Now, is it cheaper for us to go to Plymouth? Not really. It's more of a patient choice, it's more trying to work with the patients and get them Medicare than we need to pay. But those things, we can't get around with Medicaid and Medicare, uh, because they set those standards. And then we get down to like treatment and transport. We could entertain a lot of different things to increase some fees, whether it's having a lip speed, you know, you fall down in your house, we come out and we charge you a fee. Now, if you're over sixty-five, you can't collect any of that money for it, it's completely free. If you are under sixty-five, I can do that for you. If you, in your house and you have a diet bag, if you need to be juiced up and we give you some sugar, then if you're over sixty-five, I can't collect any, I can't even bill you for anything.
Is that true, Medicaid is one?
Sure, Medicaid is one. On certain circumstances, when you have, when you're over sixty-five, there are people who have Medicaid and Medicare. When we bill, we bill Medicare first. In very, very small few cases, that there might be some residual left over, and because they don't have twenty percent made or something like that, and they have Medicaid, Medicaid will say, you've reached your payment, that's all we get. Um, when, when you reach sixty-five, and some of you I know are nowhere near there yet, you have a choice to make. Medicaid A, Medicaid B, or Medicare A and B. A is for hospital, B is for EMS and variety of other things. You can have A, and you may not get B. And if you don't get B, you don't get the benefit of ambulance runs. You can still get it, but there's, there's not that there. They can ask for a waiver, there's a whole process, it's a whole lengthy process. When it comes to billing, we have three hundred and sixty-five days with Medicaid. Medicaid, we have four hundred and eighty days. Private insurance, commercial insurance, work is counted, they're a little bit more flexible, we can go a little bit longer, but it's all dependent upon.
So you have to bill that patient within that time frame, is what you said, okay.
So can Jeff back to Acumen for a minute? Their eight point five percent is based upon billing, not collection?
They're going off the top.
They're really getting a higher percentage. They're really getting a higher percentage then, right?
Yeah, I mean, and they have no incentive to collect.
No, they work for that money. But I, but I've talked with the company in email exchanges and looking at, at reports and looking at data, they work for that money and they work for facts. They're not like just sitting there going, I got my eight seven, I got my eight point seven five percent and I'm done. They will work for that money, because I get affidavits in the mail, I seem like I signed like a dozen of them like the first week I was here.
If you look at commercial insurance, you, you talk about Humana or one of those, those, they have a fixed fee for your run or service, no matter what we bill them, they, it gets adjusted down to the contractor level. So if we bill eight hundred dollars under contract and the fee is six hundred dollars, what we get is six hundred dollars, but we're paying Acumen for the difference that eight point five percent on that two hundred dollar difference, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, would it be worth our while to, um, to engage either a consultant or somebody to look at how we build these individual services, um, so that if we know the Humana contracted service for, for, um, the EMS one run is X number of dollars, every dollar over that that we're billing them will pay Acumen an additional percentage. So if we build at what their contracted service rate is, then we would only be paying Acumen for what we're getting reimbursed.
My understanding is saying, but in the EMS world, in the prehospital world, the only people you need to be a network provider for, and it's by law, it's Medicare and Medicaid. When you start entering a network care for other agencies, you will limit the amount of money on your return. I see what you're saying, it's like, why don't we just bill Medicaid all at five hundred dollars? But we have published rates that have to be assigned and have to be done. And so, yeah, but, because they're going to sit there and say, well, why, why do I pay five hundred, but you're an extor, you're the, you're.
I understand there can't be a differential billing rate, um, but if, I guess, I don't know the answer to it, but I wonder if, if we could come closer, if we could save money on the Acumen side, if we were closer in what our billing fees actually were to what our reimbursement is.
And that's possible. I'm, I'm not saying it's impossible.
I don't, I don't know.
It would be something that I, you know, you are the board, you want me to investigate this, I will get you the answers.
I would think so, that if we do have, if ten percent is our, the debt, about eight thousand something on the eighty-nine thousand we get in billing, out of that eighty-nine thousand, some of that goes beyond the Medicare, Medicaid level, right?
But the eighty-nine thousand is not contracted adjustments, eighty-nine thousand is bad debt. Those are, those are bills that we send out that we can't collect.
Yes.
Not, not the fact that Humana pays us two hundred dollars less if we bill them, that's not.
Right, what I'm saying is the eighty-nine thousand we do get, income on billing is what that number is, what portion of that eighty-nine thousand is beyond the Medicaid and Medicare? Because there are plenty of people like me with private insurance, my insurance might only cover five hundred, but if the fee is a thousand, I pay the other five hundred. So I'm wondering how many people actually do pay the full bill, right? Because you end up billing the patient that whatever isn't covered. If we go back down to only the level of Medicare, Medicaid, we might be losing revenue there.
Are we allowed to balance bill? I didn't think so. So, no, unless it's part of your co-pay. So in other words, if we bill you a thousand dollars to the run, and you have Humana, and their, their payment on that thousand dollars is five hundred dollars, we cannot bill you the balance of that five hundred dollars, unless it's part of my co-pay.
Seriously?
Yeah, you can't, you can't bill.
If we're contracting with them, that's why we don't want a contract.
Right, because otherwise you can bill me, right?
Correct.
Yeah, because I know my mom's been billed beyond Medicare, Medicaid, beyond what your insurance is covered and she pays the bill.
And so our acceptance of the payment from the insurance company doesn't bind? Our acceptance of the payment from the insurance company doesn't bind us not to balance bill?
Only.
If you're contracted.
Before contract.
Only for contracted, only if it's Medicaid and Medicare, which means the preferred provider, for we have to by law, so we're, we're.
Well, and that, I guess that's what I'm trying to say, Rich, is part of that eighty-nine thousand we're collecting goes beyond what the insurance is paying. So if we lower our fees, we might only then collect seventy-five thousand, let's say, we might hurt our revenue.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
And that's why I said it's a very delicate balance to sit there and go, this, this time, this time. I will say, the last time we changed our rates was twenty-nineteen. You know, certain areas do do other things. We can have in, we can have in-town network, we can have township, you can have county, out-of-county, in-state, out-of-state, but they're in. That's where you have this, um, it's a delicate balance. You know, you can have some other tiers, but it, it's, it's how you do it, and.
How many, do we know from a Blast guy standpoint? I know that contract is, is a chunk of money, six thousand we're at now, I think he said, I think we did get, wasn't it four thousand before?
I think it was six thousand since I've been here.
Six thousand, for twenty and twenty-one, it's sixty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just wondered how many calls go there. My same question about the Academy was, you know, if we have X number of calls seem to be going that way, and we've got a cost per call.
I'm sorry, don't we have that information?
That's okay.
Well, because of the software that I had, that we have, it, it's taken me some time to get that law there.
Yeah, and it might even be that we don't track it, I don't know.
We, we, well, I can build it into the system, but the system that I was used to before is different from this one. They're the same in essence, but I have to learn from that one. And so, I took, when, when I was shown how to do the billing, it wasn't a hundred percent for me, so then I reached out to Karen, I reached out to Acumen and to their representatives because I had questions, I had concerns, and so Lynn from Acumen filled me with everything that I needed so I could a present this to you, and so I could get a better picture about how the process works. You know, I'd be more than happy, and like I said, when I, when I come out with the, like for you guys, it's going to be the end of the year review, it will break down, how many calls were Blast account, how many calls were at the academy, how many calls were this, and it will also break down what types of calls, heart attacks, chest pains, and it will also break down the payer, you know, what is, what is our true payer ratio for, for twenty-twenty? So you have an understanding of what is going on and how it relates to billing, how it relates to collections, so you see how the process is working. Because it's a, it's a process that changes all the time. And the way you, the way that I entered the billing was different after I talked to Acumen because of the information that they wanted. And so, not that I'm sitting there saying, oh, we're going to have this magical, higher numbers, it, it will be more, hopefully more, more effective to where we do. Maybe some people qualify, but they, but we didn't, we didn't see it, we didn't have it. And so, it has, has to go to them. And there's one last thing with Medicaid or Medicaid. Just because you have Medicaid and Medicaid, doesn't mean that the pace for the ambulance. Under Medicaid and Medicare rules, you have to be non-negotiable, you have to feel that a certain criteria. If you, Jenny, could call me and say, hey Jeff, um, recall that one, say, hey, I told you, when I get to your house, you're, you're walking around, you're sitting there and everything like that, and you're like, I need to go to the hospital, okay? Can't deny you that request. But there's another form that I'm going to attach to the chart that they can sign that if Medicare, Medicaid denies that because of that, this form, this signature will then allow me to bill them.
Okay.
Because if it doesn't, it's a longer process, then I have to put this form out later. So if I get the form at the point of care, then I can get it later. So it speeds up the process and hopefully reduces it. And so, just because you call the ambulance, doesn't necessarily mean that it's covered by insurance. And so, but there is some rules when you do reach sixty-five, that we have to work a brand.
Yeah. Well, I think it's unfair if you reach sixty-five, you deserve something, you sound banking on that. So a question, like, fair enough.
I can tell you about that kind of deal, that, I'm not a, a friend of mine over in ambulance service, it was private service, and they, that's a mild business, and they have this call, they have to bring them in, and they, and they, it's a slow queue, and it's not, you know. Now, there was a little bit of concern about ambulance, and the importance or not importance to get an ambulance in twenty-twenty-two. Let me give you a little bit of history of two ambulance systems. The two thousand and nine Ford E four fifty, it's a med tech brand, it's no longer manufactured. Some parts are no longer able to get.
What are your thoughts, Jeff?
Two thousand and nine?
Two thousand and nine.
Some of the parts are not able to be retrofitted. We have to pay more money to maybe make some parts, if they get an accident, apartment doors will be made certain ways, different manufacturers, they don't all make it the same. So some things become increasingly harder to find and get. So.
Is that the box, is that the module, or is that?
They're both, they're both, uh, uh, I tell you, the two thousand and nine is a type three, all right? And for some of you that don't know what a type one, two, and three, is a type of ambulance like this, that's the type of box. Now, the other one, the newest one, is a type of one. So, we don't even bother with type two chassis, we're only going to be basically moving forward with me is with type three chassis. The type one, the truck chassis is more expensive. Like I, I talked to you about the very first day we talked about it, this is in the first meeting, is that you have a cost for that chassis alone upwards of forty thousand more than the E series. Now, caution, that is, E series, when will, when will it stop being made? That's, and that's a question that we do not know. We do know that Ford made an investment to go to gasoline. Now, Sally, uh, you've all been in the business for a while, you know, they started off years ago with fire trucks for gas, but then they went to diesel. Same thing with the ambulance, they started with gas, then they went to diesel, and then they went back to gas. Gas is historically more expensive to maintain, have longer downtime, and not as fuel efficient as we all seem to believe. Now, the four, six-oh liter diesel engine is the current diesel engine that we have in there. Now, within the industry, it's not the best engine for reliability. It's a workhorse of an engine, but only in certain applications, we're not one of them. For a diesel engine, it's not the best to have a diesel engine sit. When it sits, it leaks, when things start to fall down, the, the, uh, the inside of the motor starts to have electrolysis, it starts to have cavitation, it starts to have pitting. The diesel needs to be running, it needs to be productive, but when they sit like ours do, it's counterproductive. And so, we're at a threshold now that that is why we need to be looking, hopefully move forward to purchasing another ambulance. Can we get another year out of it? Most certainly. Can we stretch it? Yes. Is it a risk? Not really. Are we going to make a fortune on resale value on it or traded? No, because A, the brand, B, the diesel, and C, nobody's buying old trucks. That market is, is drying up more and more. Maintenance on a ga, on a diesel truck is more than maintenance on a gasoline truck, which we'll be going to. It uses far less oil than what a gasoline truck does. It requires less maintenance than a gasoline truck does. My other standpoint, we're going to get the same mileage out of it, we're going to get the same fuel economy out of it that we normally get. Um, so, but everything on a diesel costs more service than it does in gas. So Ford changed, I don't know how many years ago, back to a gas, they start off with a V ten, now they've modified it to a twenty-twenty-one with a V eight. It's a very more, it's a very robust engine, it's, it's a workhorse, and with the initial reports, it sounds like it's going to stand the test of time. The V eight has some issues, you know, they have issues with the heads, and they have, they have some issue with some part plugs for the heating and everything, but generally, it's a very, very good and reliable engines will. But they bought more fuel economy, uh, better prices would help with that, with that model. That, uh, the two thousand and nine has fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and four, nine hundred and fifty-nine miles. You think sixty thousand miles, oh, it should be in great condition. Honestly, it is. It looks, it looks like almost brand new, and in a sense, it does show its wear. But the only other next problem is how many hours on the load, how many, how many hours on net? It was three thousand six hundred and twenty-one point eight. So in miles, that comes up to two hundred and seventeen thousand miles, two hundred and seventeen thousand miles. So we are getting tours in there. It is when it's going to start costing us to repair. Plus, we're going to have the downtime. Marley, you came by the station issue, sorry I wasn't there, you were able to tour it a little bit there, glad you stopped by, I love that you stopped by when I'm there. Anyway, but there's a reason why we have two trucks, and I'm sure Lisa explained it to you, you should, you should get. You know, it's good to have two reliable trucks. It's even better when we can utilize them both when we need them also for different standbys, different events, for different things, which we do and use occasionally. But when they go down, finding a rental is not as easy as picking up the phone and going into a property. and going to Enterprise and picking it up. There are only a few handful of people that have a loan. And if you think the loaner is, looks like the vehicle that we have sitting in there now, you're wrong. It will be someone who's old, traded in the unit, that they are lending along as hard as they can. And then when you sign these leases, or these rental agreements, you assume some of the risks yet it breaks down. So there again, if we're getting something to rent for a short period of time, we risk that chance as well. So that's why it's important that we stay on schedule with replacement of vehicles. And I know it's a hard one to swallow, but I wouldn't be pushing for it if I didn't think we needed to do it. Then we have the twenty seventeen, the F four fifty, it's a six point seven liter. It's got twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-three miles. And they rotate these vehicles every week. And that's something that I'm looking at adjusting to really maximize next year, keeping less on the seventeen and putting more on the oh nine. Just for the simple fact is that I need that seventeen to at least get us to twenty twenty-seven or beyond. You know, we waited an extra year, two years for this one. So if we need to go thirty on the other one, we need to be making sure that we're not increasing it as much as we possibly can.
Quick question. The twenty thousand we've always had on that sort of lease purchase line, was that meant to work the way Wayne's works? Only we do it over a longer period of time, or is that for other lease purchases?
Yeah, so when we bought the ambulance in two thousand seventeen, um, we did a similar arrangement to what we're doing with the fire trucks. And committed, you know, we'll go ahead and pay the upfront cost, but then over the next four years, you're going to put twenty thousand dollars that we can replenish or put back the money into the general fund. One of the things that I really want to get around is going the opposite direction. And that's probably going to take, taking some of that twenty thousand dollars. You know, once we get through this ambulance purchase, taking twenty thousand dollars and putting it into the rainy day fund or maybe a standard, kind of like what Marlene has, a key fund, and setting money aside for it so that when the ambulance purchase comes up, we have the money sitting there and it's not this, you know, we get budget for it, you know, where are we going to get the money, you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah, we don't have to play catch-up with the sixty-two five.
So I really, you know, some of the, and, and Jeff is, is on the same page with it as well. And, you know, just wanting to, you know, let's start setting aside money now for, not only for this ambulance, but for the next one.
Yeah, because technically, if this one is going to be sixty-two five over two years, we're not paying the twenty on the last one in that two-year period, right?
Right.
So kind of, okay. Just wrapping my head around. Because I knew how that line item worked. I'm thinking, where's the twenty on the two thousand seventeen one? But you probably would have loved to put that in there too, but we would have been like, oh, look, it didn't shrink at all.
The thing is, the twenty that's in there this, for twenty twenty, we've got too many twenties, but, um, is actually not needed. They finished paying off the ambulance last year and didn't realize it. So that's, that's in there, and there's a couple of different avenues. It's not, we don't need to discuss it tonight, but there's some different avenues that we can pursue. Whether it's establishing, establishing now, I mean, I guess I'll go into it quick, but I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it, but, you know, we know that Jeff's going to be over, not anything of his doing over budget, not anything of his doing, but because we hired a new EMS director at the beginning of the year, there's been a lot of overtime in that department and we are paying, um, benefits. So we're guessing it's going to be actually about twenty thousand dollars. So there's a choice that we can make in using that twenty thousand dollar lease purchase and just letting it, you know, even off the budget and, and call it a day and move on. Or we could take that twenty thousand dollars and stick it into the rainy day fund and then do an additional appropriation to cover the rest of his budget. So, um, again, not a discussion for tonight, but some people thought, and, um.
Yeah, that's good to know, because I was thinking, aren't we still paying on that two thousand seventeen?
Yeah, no, I thought it was a four year last year and they were done, so.
Yeah, great. Well, at least that's one big thing that happened before Jeff got here. Otherwise, it'd be like, stick the other twenty back in there.
Jeff, how many, Jeff, how many hours you rolled the seventeen?
The seventeen has seven hundred and twenty, which correlates to forty-three thousand miles on the seventeen.
Thanks.
I had them out there today on blocks and they were running as fast as they could, so I made a note of it. I was obviously shocked to see the, the three thousand on the nine. And I looked, and after it was requested, I looked and like, yeah, I couldn't believe it. And then when I saw the seven hundred and twenty on the other one, you know, it's, you know, it gets used. And, uh, you know, going back to the call by, talking to the crews and, you know, looking at some of the numbers trending over the last couple of years that I can, that I can look at, is that when the summer camp is in, bond is done. So, you know, there again, those are good payers, you know. So we're going to be looking at commercial insurance, we're going to be looking at higher payers. So, you know, there is, you know, if there's, there's a trade-off when it comes to your community, when you have a different demographic. And so, um, you know, if we can balance that out somehow, great. If we can't, whatever year is different. You know, we could be, if we could be the completely other side next year, we could be looking at sixty percent commercial and forty percent Medicare. It, it just, it just all depends on this. You know, you can look at COVID and say, well, more people with pre-existing conditions elderly can go out. So when they don't go out, they don't, they don't, things don't happen. They don't follow, they don't handle things that just go wrong. And so, uh, you know, we, we had a lull for like two months and then it started picking back up.
Yes, and it's reopened.
Same, and same as the numbers, numbers are picking back up. And they went on to the academy like three times a day, and they're probably worse than us then. But, you know, they, you know, the call buying just started with Chris, you know, so.
Well, I think that is, we make, we can make that case where that there are higher numbers of calls. Are there other, aside from billing, when we contact with Monterey, I mean, there's not really any other way that you increase revenue unless, are there other ways that services increase revenue outside of billing?
Some use user fees, you know, it's a very small amount, you're, you're able to do it.
Wouldn't add up to a lot.
We can do a standby piece, like we talked about the last meeting, whoever can do that. What we're going to see a better rate of return is making sure the billing is done the very best they can. And that's what I'm trying to make sure gets done. There's an educational piece that I have to deal with the crews. And so they know what they need to get, because there are important things that we have to obtain from the patients. And, you know, when I started and when it was, no fault to Scott, Stephen, whoever, there was a billing period of a lot of things not done. Not their fault, but it was information that just was not attainable, that I'm trying to get that information together to get it done. And so, yeah, we're going to see a dip, but we're going to see a rebound. And then you're going to be like, why can't we have that, those kind of ones all the time? I'd love it. And I'd love for you to have the income that I had where I was at, because you would be ecstatic, because I'd be way over that much, but we don't have that.
That's a good thing, though, we don't want high call, call buy.
But is there any, and again, I, um, I wonder if there is any sort of utilization review that might help us in terms of our billing and charting that we make us more effective and sort of make sure we're capturing all that we can for, um, for the services we're providing.
And that's what I'm working on with the soft, I'm working on that with the software to streamline it. So I'm asking and they're having to complete what is necessary or they close that turnout. So when I know the inner workings of it, then I can just configure the software to do it. And so I have a, a call set up. I have a label's information with the angle of their phone tag, their email tag, to set up time where they can come in. Because since I didn't come in on the implementation side of the software, it's kind of hard to know the inner workings of that software and how much is configurable and how much is not. So if you had a different one, it would have been a different case. But we don't, they're both the same, it's just different names.
It's, it's partially that too, you, you're realizing you don't have to make your crew accountable to get any information that's necessary to get the bill done right.
Exactly.
Yeah, and hopefully they'll catch on very quickly that whatever occurred prior, those days are done.
And see, some, some have, and it is minor things that can be done. I have a couple already that are now making sure they're entering some billing information based upon how some of the billing goes. And so it's some of those things that will speed things along, that will make it more efficient, or make it more effective, and we will work on getting a better rate of return. We will work on getting the due diligence that's needed to make sure that we're maximizing every possible way.
All right, so here we're at a slightly different number today. Thoughts from, uh, Marlene and Joyce and Possum?
I, I just have two comments. Uh, we're still at ninety thousand dollars, but I really, really appreciate Jeff sharpening his pencil and also doing some rearranging, uh, on how we can buy things over this three-year plan that we have rather than putting it all in now. I think I can make work within one budget. You know, I don't like ninety thousand dollar increase, but I don't think we have a choice at this point. I think sometime in the next year, uh, we do need to talk to the academy, and we talked about that the other night.
Yeah.
Those are things that we can do to help increase our, our budget as well. I think we have to be very careful when we talk to the academy. We can't just go in and say, you're going to pay this, because we have to provide them with coverage. You know, whether they increase their rate or not, we have to. They can't call us and we not go, that's not.
Yeah, no, I.
We have to do that.
I agree.
I think that we can come up with a plan with Jeff's, uh, you know, showing what our inquiries have been and, uh, you know, how many trips we make over that stuff.
Yeah.
I think we can, uh.
That's the thing, I think if we're just transparent with the data, the actual evidence, even, even to the extent that they probably have better payers from a commercial insurance standpoint, makes up a little of that difference, but, but we know on average what a call costs us. Yeah, we have an annual budget, we have X number of calls. If you take that annual budget and remove the revenue, it's this much per call that it cost us. And, um, and it, it gets more and more expensive as insurance covers less and less, and yet all these costs keep going up. We all know medical supplies, like thirty-five bucks for a Tylenol at a hospital, so I can only imagine what a, a cot or a uniform costs now, probably ten times what it's worth. But I, I think if we're just fair and transparent, but I thought they were, he was in no position to make a decision at the time because I think he had already was exiting the last Fed Master, we just need to go back and have the same conversation. And it's not a great time for them either, they've taken such a hit. The last thing they want to be asked is for more money. So.
I have a question, are we, are we pushing the ambulance back one year?
Well, order it in twenty-one, get it in twenty-two.
What if we waited another year?
Won't we just be at the same numbers then that we are now? Might be cheaper to not wait. I don't know.
Well, I, my only thing is, I mean, Jeff certainly has done his homework, but basically, um, we've got an O seven that's thirteen years, but if it's only used, uh, it's rotated out, it's only used, you know, we don't use half the life of it. And I'd be willing to gamble that, you know, to keep that thing running and, and good maintenance and so forth and push the new ambulance down for another year.
Jeff, did you say that the repair, repair cost on that, um, older rig, that is going to increase?
Well, I'm, I'm saying, you know, order it, uh, order it in, in, um.
You're saying order it in twenty twenty-two?
Yeah.
Right, but.
So we've got a twenty-three.
To get it, to get it in twenty-three, yeah. So we have, you know, we have twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, three years of maintenance on that.
Well, we should actually only have one year because we're only using the thing half the time.
But the OEM is not available anymore, isn't that what you're saying, Jeff?
I'm sorry?
The OEM, the original equipment manufacturing materials, um, are not available on that rig? Isn't that what you're saying?
When I talk about that, I talk about the box, the rear end of the ambulance.
Okay.
The manufacturer went out of business, the line was discontinued years ago. So the problem with that is, is manufacturers build things specifically in certain ways. So it's not like a car door on the front. You know, you can get another Ford car door ten years from now in there. And, and it will work out there. You get an aftermarket that will put, they'll, they make those doors all the time and you can put them. There's no aftermarket makers of this stuff. So when it, if it gets in an accident, or it breaks, or it, it starts not to work, it becomes harder and harder to fix those things. So that's a consideration. You want to push it off another year, it's an animal. But you're going to have increased cost of maintenance and you're going to have more expensive maintenance. We're not going to have cheaper maintenance like oil changes and whatnot. We're going to have more major maintenance. And then you have to go with, we're going to go through two more price changes with builders. So we, we risk the chance of, is it worth waiting that time, taking that gamble and making it? Hey, I laid out what I think. You don't want to go that way, I'll go and make it work the best that I can, because I work for you. But I want to present you with what you need.
Jeff, can we lease it?
I mean, I haven't really looked into that right now, Bill.
Lease it to other services you need?
Pardon?
Lease the old one to other services?
No, no, I said lease the new one.
Oh, lease a new one, okay, like you do a car.
You basically finance it?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Are you asking to finance it?
Okay.
Is that what your question is?
Well, I, my thing is, let somebody else have the burden, but we, we lease it.
We're going to start paying babys to ambulance services, they'll do at least purchase. There's these purchases. Certain, certain builders do do that, um, but there again, that can bring the cost up higher when you're talking the lease. You're going to still have to do the maintaining, you're still going to have to do.
You're going to have to buy out the lease. If we have, if we have. Got a higher purchase.
Right, I mean, we're paying basically interest on that as, well, we have money in the bank that we can, we can purchase it outright, that's what we're going to.
The reason I asked for information on trucks, is I couldn't remember what you were saying. But as old as the older one is, it's in an age where it is going to, not nickel-dining it though.
It potentially can. I don't want to say, put things in your mind says, oh, it's going to, it's going to have a new engine tomorrow.
Yeah.
There's a chance. And then are you willing to start going to ten, you know, fifteen thousand at a shop to put a new engine in, and then six months from now, it needs something else? And then it just, it's kind of like when you get old. When you fall down and break your hip, everything starts to get worse and worse. So.
He's coming back from that falling down.
You should go back to the age where you have, well, yeah.
I do like your idea though, of trying to change the rotation and give as much.
Yeah.
I mean, if we have the new one in the works to give as much as we can.
Out of the old one.
To, to, to save it as much as we can. So if we need to push it farther, we have that ability and we have that flexibility. But when we don't, where we're at right now and they're teetering the way they are, you're going to have two trucks that are staying the same way. you're going to have two trucks that are staying the same way and then it's counterproductive. We should have a main line and then we have a backup. And then it just keeps on going that cycle. Goes out for service, your backup goes in there so we can maintain it. Now, if you wanted to go one step further and hold on to the truck after we get that, that's another great idea, but there's inherent costs to keeping it too. But that was just, we was talking a lot of that issue. But, you know, there, my view is moving forward, you're going to save money by buying '22 instead of '21. And you'll get the results that you want to get. You wanted to lay it, okay, I'm perfectly fine to lay it. Will it work? We can make whatever work. We can fix whatever we have. But how much are you willing to keep on investing in something that may just become... And then you've got to look at the downtime. Putting a new engine in, putting transmission isn't going to be a day or two. It's going to be all week. And then we risk the chances of something happens to the main line. And then we have to look at renting. And then you're looking at upwards of $250 to $500 per day to rent one. And it doesn't come stock. It comes empty. And then you have to insure it with more insurance because you still have the other one-year insurance. Now you've got to insure the lease or the loan. And so all of those things happen and then...
Kenny, could I suggest we either take a straw poll or make a decision here on if we purchase it in '22 or '23? I mean, I think we've got a lot of information.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we can talk about this for a long time.
So, yeah, let's go around the room. '22 or '23?
'22.
Sally, '22, '23?
How many do I need to go with '22?
Bill, '22, '23?
I don't like '23.
Bill, '22, '23?
'22.
Okay. '22. Okay. Joyce?
'21.
Now, don't tell us '24, Jeff. Don't raise your hands.
Um, I'm only bringing this up because we don't have a room full of supervisors. Karen, run through me again everything that goes in that benefits line. Aside from insurance, there's other stuff, right?
There's health insurance. We have short-term, long-term disability. One America. That comes out of there. Any type of drug screens that we do? Most of the departments aren't, unless they're hiring. I think EMS and Park are probably, you get more drug screens than anybody else. Boots that departments that get.
Work boots?
Work boots that comes out of that benefits line.
What about taxes?
Taxes. Yeah, taxes.
Parasites.
Yeah, I guess. In my brain, that was just a given.
Sudafuda.
Yeah, all of that. And on retirement.
Social Security.
Per full-time employees.
Okay.
But getting that reduction on the health insurance was huge.
Yeah, you shared a thousand something to stop this for the...
And one other thing they did share with us, which I didn't, I didn't take it out of the budget just because I wasn't exactly sure how much. Actually, aim the health insurance. The Board of Directors decided to give us a one-month holiday in January on our health insurance premiums. So we'll only pay 11 months of health insurance premiums for the 12-month period.
This year or not yet?
This January, they're giving us a one-month holiday. So that'll give us a little bit more. It's, you know, one month is not a ton, but in the grand scheme of things, every little bit helps and...
Yeah, what was the reason?
Um, they're...
It's unusual.
Well, with COVID, their claims were much lower than they expected.
Okay.
So people weren't doing the like dis surgeries.
That's the answer. Thank you.
Yeah, so that was...
I think they actually, when they were selling this on the plan, they mentioned that they had done that once before because things came out better for them and they were more profitable or whatever than they thought.
Yeah, so I'm waiting. I think September 4th, I'm supposed to have the actual increase. So hopefully we'll be under the 8%. We'll be, I mean, historically, we've been, any other year, we've been lower than their average. So hopefully...
I know we've been, we've really tried to provide a good benefits package and we do pay a premium for it. And I've always supported that in 13 years. I think I've been on council. But Jeff knows it's expensive to do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's 29% of our salary.
Yeah.
Percent of, I mean, a lot of places it runs more like 23 or 24.
And it's not like, I don't want employees to have to help with that bill. You know, and then you get back to, you know, we're not as competitive on wages and all of that. It's just one of those numbers that you're guaranteed it creeps up every year. I think once Ralph Winters, when he was on council, when I say my second or third year, had figured out that back then it cost us about $6.90 or something per hour per employee for our health insurance. I'm guessing that $6 something an hour has creeped up to more like 10 or 12. It's probably doubled in the 12 or 13 years I've been on council. That's just to ensure a full-time employee. Then you've got to pay the wage on top of that. So we probably have employees who are only at that wage. Like their insurance is as much as their wage. I don't know. I'd be curious to know that number, but there's part of me that also does not want to know that number.
I can figure it out, but I don't think we have employees that are making the amount that we're paying them for insurance.
I hope not, but...
I can tell you how much I think.
Were you there? Were you there or here?
That was one of my deciding factors was Jonathan and I talked. It was, my insurance, it breaks down into health is one. Medical is one. Dental is totally different. And vision is totally different. Dental alone was over $100 per month. Vision was about $30. And then medical for a family was, I had $179 a pay break amount.
That was at your last job? Oh, wow.
So with me just getting medical and dental, or eye, you know, I was spending, you know, $400 a month. And that was just my portion. So, yeah, this, this, like I was telling you earlier, you know, the benefit of low-cost insurance, the benefit of having good equipment, having good places to work, it bodes well attracting a group of people that want to handle it, along with the low callback. It helps. If you think that me being 50 years old, I wanted to leave...
Ten tons of shit.
You know, I'm leaving 1,500 calls a month to, you know, '25. You're going to be terrible. It's not fair. I don't have the 1,500. You're hurting on your body. You're hurting on the backs.
Yeah. And then you've got to pay back on insurance.
You end up going on 12.
So we move on from here.
Okay, so I know we lost, but Marlene, you're okay with where we're at now? Counsel, let me just take another straw poll. Is this budget okay with you? I'll look at you again, Rich, first.
I mean, I'm concerned because it's up $134,000. But of that, $76,000 were about 59% of it. Yes, we made the salaries and wages and the rest of it. And we've added a chunk because of the ambulance purchase. So I'm concerned about, you know, about how that cumulative, as we go across all the departments, with a negative ratio of revenue to expenses. But I don't, I don't see we have another choice right now. I mean, I think we're committed to the service, so I think we have to wait for it.
So...
You know, we're looking at ambulance purchase in '21 and '22 and then getting it in '22. You know, worst-case scenario, we have one or 15 months. If something horrible changes now, we have to go with the gamble or we put a coin, hold the ambulance, that's another year. It's then put it off a year. And with our income drops drastically, you know, some of the taxes that are coming in are nowhere near. But they estimate. You know, we can still, we can still go down if we have to. But if we've got it, the lease can still go forward.
Yeah.
And I think if we can go forward, that's the best option. But it's not like we have to make this decision to pay the money out tomorrow for the next few days.
Okay. Bill, see any other thoughts or comments or do you care if budget as is?
No.
Bill G?
No, I think we need to do a balanced budget. We need it to balance. We don't need to be in the red.
So you want this budget lowered again or some other budget?
I think we need to go by department, pardon, by departments. We have them chop it. And that's what's done at the county level. When the budget season starts, you know, departments come in and say what they want. And at that point in time, just at that point in time, we don't know what the income is going to be. Then Julie finds out what the income is going to be and says, and says to everybody, okay, example, we got, initially, you're not right. But I mean, we've got $5 million in requests, and $5 million in income, and we've got $6 million in requests. So we've got to cut a million bucks. And that's when all the departments have to come back in and chop the budgets to balance it out. You just can't keep running, you can't run it in the red.
Right.
And if we have to have a balanced, if we have to have a balanced budget ordinance, you know, I'm all for that. I'm not going to do that today, but, you know.
Right.
You have to have an ordinance and all that. We've got to balance the budget. If you can't continue to run in the red.
Well, but does the county do what Karen does where they underestimate income?
She does. She does.
So they make the adjustments so after the money comes in? If you don't, if you don't know the exact amount, you're saying like, when she gets her first disbursement next June, they gather taxes? Yeah, so Karen would have to mid-year, say, come back in and slop some budget, right? Is that kind of what you're suggesting? Because right now, I, I think what you're saying is, I need,
you're wanting me to come out and say, okay, we're looking at a deficit in the general fund of $203,000. So how are we going to get them married up? One thing I, because both bills were in my office yesterday afternoon and made the suggestion, and I took it, and that's fine. And I agree that I need to be more vocal in telling you, but I've also provided information. And you guys are the ones that make the final decision on the budget and where we're going. One thing that I will constantly remind you, every year we get to this point and I'm like, okay, we've got a deficit of $100,000. We've got a deficit of, you know, wherever. You don't, I don't know, when I estimate the income, I estimate low for a purpose because I want to, I want to under-promise and over-deliver. So I've heard that earlier today too.
Right.
So I'm trying, I had a lot of people in my office today. So, you know, so for me to say that we are definitely going to be at a deficit of $203,000, I can't stand that. We may be at $100,000. We may actually break even. We may make, we may bring in more. I don't know. But I also, I am struggling right now because I don't want to deprive departments of what they, what they need and projects moving forward in a, in a situation where if we can do a project this year, instead of push it off, which is a lot of, I think, some of the EMS issue is we pushed off a lot of things.
Yeah.
And now it's, it's time.
It's coming to root. It's coming to root.
But I also, you know, so I want to be careful in, you know, we put a lot of stuff off and it's now time to pay. So there's a lot of different factors. And I also realize that, you know, we're probably at the pinnacle of income right now. You know, this 20, this year, 2020, actually 21.
Income is going to start to...
21 is probably going to be the pinnacle of the income.
Yep.
But that growth quotient is going to start dropping because it's a six-year average. So is it going to tank? Probably not. But, you know, we're not going to be realizing as much property tax income as we have in the last couple of years. Not that it's going to go down. It's just not going to increase like it has. So, you know, there are other ways that we can find to cut costs. I mean, you can take a look at health insurance. You can only offer, instead of offering two versions of the health insurance, you can offer one and put everybody on one. I mean, there's a lot of different ways to cut it. But at the end of the day, I think approving a budget, which you have to remember is a guideline for spending. You can't go over it, but you can go under it.
Right.
Our department heads historically have been very good about staying at or below where their, where their limits are. And, you know, if, if we can make it easier for them and we're not in a situation, you said you didn't like to go for additional appropriations. So, you know, let's not do that either.
Right. We just need to notice that the trend is not getting better. It's getting worse.
Correct. I think in the next...
All my whole point is, as it was to you.
Yeah.
Is, you know, the rise is not sunny.
No, and I...
And we bring it up now and we look at it. I mean, am I happy with it? No, I'm not. But I think we need to...
Well, according to your last reports though, that showed the balances of where we're at, the only department we were predicting would be over-budget was EMS. Revenue in the last several years, we've come in way under where departments have put money back into the general fund. We don't have a history of dipping in the general. We have a history of giving back to the general fund. So am I missing something on those reports? Like Park is under-budget, which is amazing considering the park got hit with COVID and you probably have X people on the beach.
There are some, something like the fire department. You know, we're going to pay out $200,000 here in the next couple of weeks. I mean, and that's going to be a huge chunk of change. And it's going to, you know, so their budget's not going to, their budget will look normal once again. So there are some, some different things that'll hit, you know, just at different times of the year. I'm waiting. Jeff was, we were discussing some things earlier about expenses and I would like to wait until the end of September when I can take a look at a quarterly report as far as the cash flow and see where we're at. Because at the halfway point in the year, we were okay.
We were good, yes.
Yes.
I agree.
So, you know...
That's my point. I feel like we're having a fire alarm go off here when there's not a fire.
Yeah, and it's hard because we don't, we just don't know.
So it hasn't been a normal year.
Yeah.
I just don't want to operate off of fear and panic and alarms if there's no reason to.
Bill, in theory, I agree with you. I think we should strive toward a balanced budget.
Right.
And we shouldn't consistently have that suspended. However, we have, as a council, have made decisions that have approved some of those increased expenses. You know, whether it's the police, whether it's EMS, hiring a special officer. I mean, if we go back to those departments and what do we say? Okay, wait, you can't hire that expedition police officer now. And I think we made that decision to do that going forward. I, again, I don't want to keep dipping into the well to...
We made it going forward, but we didn't have all the numbers when we made those decisions that we had today. That's, that's, here again is my point. I mean, yeah, but we answer to the public. And there are people out in the public that do know what minus means. And, you know, do they come to us normally? No, they don't. But I just don't want the trend to continue if it doesn't happen.
Right. We just budget this way. Every year, every year, we way underestimate our income. We over-estimate expense. And we end up with money going back in the general fund. It hasn't happened all 13 years I've been here, but I'll bet, I'll bet my own council salary it's happened 10 or 11 of the 13 years.
Big wager.
Oh, seriously? Well, yeah, you know, okay.
Well, I think...
My luck is in the...
Push it all forward. All right.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to be an alarmist about these things for the public. Yeah.
You know, Karen gave us, I think, a real telling sheet here sometime back with the general fund from 2018 to 2025, or 2025. And if you haven't or you need it again, I suggest you get it because when you look at, when you look at her numbers, and I spent time yesterday with her, we're $350,508 in the hole. We're three hundred and fifty thousand, five oh eight in the hole estimated on twenty twenty, but actually it's five hundred and ten, five oh eight according to where she calculated. But I mean, you look at the balances in the general fund and twenty twenty-four, we're gonna be down to sixty-three thousand dollars.
And that's been updated since you had it yesterday.
What's that?
That, I've updated that since yesterday and it's not quite as bad and I just, I left the office.
The numbers better than what they're on here?
The numbers are better than what they're on there because we reduced.
Forget this.
So, yeah.
Upset.
But, okay.
But it's still going in that direction.
The point being, you know, and I know the numbers changed, but every time the numbers changed, the update needs to be shared with everyone. And no, no fault of your own, I'm just saying.
Yeah, they're sitting on the printer at the office.
And as long as the printer's broken, yeah, that's, you know, nothing, but, yeah.
No, it's just, I, I left the office without grabbing them because I was in a hurry to get here. So I'm just, just looking back, just so you have the information. And I will say, every month I send out a financial report that has, I just don't update that cash flow thing because it's, it's not. I'm not like Rich and you have, I don't have the sense of cash flow like he does for the CRC. Um, but just going back over the last couple of years, so in two thousand nineteen, when we did the budget, we had a total difference of a hundred and sixty-six thousand, three oh six. So going into two thousand nineteen, that we expected a deficit of that. We came out ahead in two thousand nineteen. So this year, going in for the budget for two thousand twenty, um, estimated a, a total difference. And this, this includes tax caps and my numbers may have changed since I did this, but two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, a hundred and forty last year. I don't think we're gonna, well, we may end up being there with the, with the grants that you all approved.
Right.
So we may be closer, but, you know, when I looked at the cash flow halfway, we were doing pretty well. So, you know, I can't see in the future, none of us have a, have a, have a crystal ball. So I'm, we're doing the best that we can with what we have. We wanna support our departments. You know, going forward, when you make decisions to spend money, you know, keep some of this stuff in, intact. But, and again, you know, at this point, I just need to advertise. And if I advertise high and we, you know, if we wanna take some more time and, and see what we can shave, you know, that's, that's up to you. But if you have it, we had until September twenty-third to finalize a budget. And I'm just trying to give them all the information and I, so, and I know you had some very strong feelings yesterday about, about things. So I'm trying to, you know, do my best to be more, more forceful and sharing my thoughts.
Awesome.
I'm not trying to call everybody back in and say, you sliced into the bones. That's.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, and I'm not trying to be an alarmist.
Yeah.
On the other hand.
Yeah.
Right. That's the problem I'm having with the conversation in general, that is panicking the public and everybody else. If historically that hasn't been what's occurred, maybe historically we need to look at the income and be more realistic about the estimate for the income. Cause historically, property taxes in this community have gone up, people pay them. We don't, we have that type of community. We have a lot of retirees who actually afford their taxes, et cetera. I mean, my taxes have gone up.
Oh, our.
Doubled since I moved in that house.
But you have to remember the property, the property taxes are constrained. So you can only, you know, so the fact that you're paying more property taxes doesn't necessarily mean that we're, you know.
Yeah, your percentage stays the same. It's capped. If the pool of money gets larger and that percentage of that pool would get larger. But I'm just saying, if, if we're harming people because we're not accurately estimating revenue, then let's not do that. Let's be more real. I know we like to underestimate revenue. I've agreed with that method for thirteen years. If you don't agree with that method, then we'll get a more accurate picture of it.
I'm fine with it this year. I'm just saying going forward. One thing that Karen's done is she's changed some of her reporting, some suggestions that we use in the county. And some of the reporting that she does is a lot easier to read, particularly on a monthly basis. And I just think that that is helping us get, but when you look at these going forward, you know, says that basically in the twenty twenty-four, we've got it in the balance of sixty-three thousand dollars. That is alarming to me.
And yes, that's alarming to me as well and we need to, to take some time.
And I'm just trying to bring that to everybody's attention.
Yes.
I'm saying we need to change it. I just, you know, let's look at, look, numbers don't lie. That's what I'm saying.
Well, they can if you're not accurately reporting the, if you're underestimating the income.
Right.
Which is, you know, some of that too.
I agree. And I'm not saying call everybody back in their job. I'm just saying going forward, we need to do.
Well, and I think you and I discussed some different ways of, of making sure that we, we can change some, some expenses and hold us more, you know, not more accountable, but, but put some procedures in place so that we're setting aside money and making sure that we're not, you know, just giving us some parameters going forward to say, you know what? When we're budgeting, we wanna make sure that at the end of the day, we have fifty percent of our operating budget going forward in, in reserve. Um, and maybe we can change some ways that, you know, like, like I said earlier, moving money from, um, from the budgets into a separate fund so we, moving ahead, we can put money away for the purchase of the ambulance or whatever new truck the fire department needs, kind of like in, you know, a squad car. I know there's some, some big expenses coming up that, you know, just at the county level as far as like a CAD system. And I don't have all the details, but just snippets that I've gotten that, you know, we're gonna have to start putting money away or finding other sources of, of how to fund some of these things that, you know, they're gonna need. So, um, you know, at the end of the day, we're not, we're never gonna be in the clear. It's always.
No.
You know, it, it's just doing the best that we can to, as our department heads, I think, do every day is, you know, making sure that we're, that they're spending money wisely. They're not spending things on frivolous items. Um, you know, and now I, I have all the confidence in the world that Jeff is gonna change things in EMS so that their, their revenue is higher and, you know, we're not gonna see this, this huge increase in, in their budget as well. I think that he'll get that under control. Um, so I think, I think with all the, the negative that we have right now as far as, you know, just the whole world situation and, you know, the unknown, that we also have some good things going for us. And we continue to have, we're, we continue to have very good department heads that keep the best, that have the best in Poler in mind. And we have a council that is thoughtful and, and willing to work together, which I think is huge. Um, you know, and we have a lot of projects that are going, you know, Poler is going in a good direction. Um, and we're, we're doing our best to, you know, maintain what we have and improve what we can. And, you know, let's just keep, keep going that way. So, I don't know if you need a pep talk.
Thank you.
I'm not listening to it. I don't need to.
We didn't, that was much better than I was thinking about it. So what do we?
Thank you.
Yes, I, I agree.
I think we need to let Karen know for our play advertising now.
I mean, yeah, no, and, and, but that was the, there was a motion the other night that said, go ahead and advertise based on the changes tonight. If you all are okay with the EMS change and the reduction, well, we, yeah, we're actually not done. I forgot. I'm sorry.
At least for advertising, I, yeah, I don't know how much time we're gonna spend on it. Um, again, kinda in the park department, we've estimated low. Um, but there are two projects and one was in my email that I sent to you guys for the last council meeting, but we didn't get to it at the last budget session. Um, about replacing the sidewalk in front of the building and doing a storm, a stormwater connection from the east side of the building down to the lighthouse. Um, it's something we've talked about for a couple of years and that sidewalk's in pretty bad condition. I worry about anyone tripping, ADA issues, that kind of stuff, but it's a heavily used sidewalk. You know, it's probably the most used section in town. We tried to, you know, when we originally sat down and did the budget, we thought we would focus on probably the other pavilion for repair work next year. But, um, I kinda had a change of heart on that and think we should do the sidewalk next year rather than the pavilion, which may be a little more expensive. I've been meeting with contractors to try and get an estimate for it, but, so I was thinking to put twenty thousand aside for that in the park next year. And then, um, the match that we will have for a county stellar project is twenty percent. Uh, it's six hundred thousand dollars that's been awarded to us. And I could see next year, I'd like to see us start on the planning process for that. So our match for planning, I'd like to set aside somewhere, again, about twenty thousand as the match for that for next year. Um, if we don't need it, we won't use it, but that way we can get that project moving forward. So those are two things that, after we initially did it, that I would like to change for the park. Um, we had a really good year this year as far as revenue and in keeping those bolt slips filled is helpful there. Um, but that would bring it up to two ninety-eight, eight fifty in regard to those changes. And I guess I'd like to see us advertise for that and if we need to have more discussion, that's, that's fine.
What is the difference dollar-wise in the capital?
Thirty-five.
It would be from five thousand in building improvements. Actually, it, it should be twenty thou, it should be forty thousand dollars in contractual services and then twenty-five thousand in, um, building improvements.
So.
That's where I started and I got myself confused and then.
It was a total difference of thirty-five thousand. Is that right, Karen? Cause we took off five thousand for the pavilion or no?
We added. Yeah, I think we added. It's a total additional of forty.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, you're right. Yes, yes.
Okay, so I guess I've got an additional twenty in contractual services, so that takes us to forty thousand. And then an additional twenty in building improvements, which takes us to twenty-five. But on that sheet, it just shows everything in building improvements.
So there's also a small chance that, or not a small chance, but there is a chance that three of them may not be doing any of their OPR projects, which would free up CDVG dollars. You don't have to make a match on that. We could shift some of those dollars and add in the project bill and I talked about, um, with the playground up by the parking lot, if we change the scope of the regional stellar project. Um, thought being do something for the retirees in the old playground as we're doing that regional stellar project. And I don't know what that would look like. I didn't necessarily wanna budget anything out of the park budget in case we can get more CDVG dollars.
That's, that's why I'd like that. That twenty thousand, I'm thinking is just for the planning match for, to hire, you know, a planning firm to help us with that and do some public input, have a couple of ideas that we take to them as a starting point, you know.
Yeah.
Flesh it out a little bit, do some public input and then hopefully, you know, sometime next year be moving into the design phase.
Yeah, and it could be the match that was on that grant, their down sum.
Okay, but we had.
We're not required to.
In the county, well, in the county stellar application, we committed our.
Eighty thousand.
To do, yes, right.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's just possible there'll be more CDVG funds where we could add on to that project and do the type of project bill and I kind of discussed, be a, a great capital improvement project, I think.
And we haven't gone to CRC for any of those projects yet, have we?
No, um, yeah.
Terms of the planning stuff, so I think.
Right.
There's another resource potentially there.
Yeah.
Anyway, and then there's just one other item, just so you don't get shocked if you do reach the advertisement. Under grants, what?
He thought we're gonna read it.
Well, that's why I put the caveat in, knowing that it probably won't be read, but.
It should be proof, right? It's one year we can get it right.
I'm telling you it goes right, cause there, there's all kinds of issues with gateway and it's just, it's gonna be a nightmare. Um, so under grants, um, I'm putting in, uh, we're estimating one point two million dollars in grant income. And then, but it's just gonna turn around and be spent, so it's an in-out sort of thing. So when you see twelve mil, or one point two million on there as a budget item and it's, it's okay.
It's not a bad thing to do.
It's not coming out of the general fund and putting us under this year. Exactly, exactly.
I went through a lot of sleepless nights trying to get that grant money, so it better be in there.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of, I mean, if it did make it in the budget, it wasn't a big deal, but it just takes time to be here for me, so. I will get everything out there and say that it's all, hand it off to somebody else to proofread the boards.
Get an extra set.
But with the new way they do it, it doesn't have to appear in the newspaper. It just has to be, you submit it via gateway and then just would, I'd make the, the website public with it, so. Hopefully it appears correctly and there's some grace by DLGF and if things are wrong, then it's, there's, yeah, there's some mode to correct it.
Or maybe over the winter, we can look at different areas of the budget. Someone can look at, you know, insurance, how it's affected, look at things historically. Um, have some of these conversations before we advertise.
One of the things I'd like to see, and I talked to Marlene about it this afternoon, is, you know, a work session at some point in time would help the council understand how she has to do her budgets and what she can do with money and not do with money. I don't know that we all understand it. She was last Tuesday night, you know, saying, well, I can't do this, I can't do that, you know, why can't you and, you know. It would help us know in, uh, forming up the relationship between the township and the town.
Well, and I think that's very important because, you know, when you look at the money that's in the township, it's pretty easy to sit in this side and look and say, well, they've got pretty deep pockets and.
Right.
You know, come up and so I think it'd be very helpful to know how you got it like that.
How do you really?
It's your real question, how deep do your pockets go, Harley?
Well, we all know that the downstate, you know, some of these townships are sitting with so much flesh money that, you know, there's always a move afoot every two, three, four years that, that we need to consolidate and take the money away. That's right. And for those townships, let's say unions, whatnot, it's not rolling in. It's almost like the same thing with the libraries. I mean, Plymouth's sitting on eight million dollars and, you know, people wanna take that library money away. You know, our budget here at this library, you know, six hundred and fifty, seven hundred thousand. We don't have extra money.
Eight million dollars?
They got eight million dollars.
They've got eight million.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So I, I mean, you just, it's enough, it's all the numbers. What'd you just say?
I said if we buy another fire truck, we won't have pockets left.
Well, I fall against you. I tried.
Well, that, we're fortunate though that the township has invested in some of our capital improvements too, like the stellar plan and Cavaliers Park and that's investing in the schools.
Right.
Making their assets better, which attracts families. I, I've already seen people walking that trail and playing on that playground equipment without there being a soccer game. That's kind of cool, cause it's like people, you see them out and go, okay, we really can get families scared of just things for them to do. And the school, that's a much nicer asset over there now. But you guys have always invested back in the community.
It works. We work together.
Even like you're shelling pockets.
Are we done?
You need to get Karen?
I am.